We're gonna ask this beer with me. Whoever's next is what? That's, uh-
Rudy.
Land and Woods Cluster Development.
Development.
What's that?
Insight Development, yeah.
Okay, I guess we can get reading anyways while they're preparing. All right, the third table item on the agenda is Land and Woods Cluster Development. This is located at 687 Hard Road. The applicant, Insight Land Development, Inc., and they're requesting a preliminary final site plan and subdivision approval to subdivide a 4.8 acre parcel having as the designated number, property number, and this is nine single-family lots, including one existing residence. And this is located in an R3, single-family residential district under Section 192-27 and 228-8 at the code of the town of Webster. And again, this is a public hearing and public notice of that was published in the Webster Herald. Mr. Newfeld.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for making these unusual circumstances and still making it possible. I will keep my presentation brief. I'm Rudy Newfeld. I work at Crossdown Construction and Insight Development. With me outside this evening is Mr. Yanda and, uh, Mr. Shelley, if you have any technical questions. So, he gave a nice recap, Mr. Chairman. Eight lot subdivision. We have all the utilities. We've had three meetings so far, so I know the board and the members listening in are familiar with it. The one big issue that came up last time that was extensively dealt with was the drainage. And we have had numerous meetings. We've had a site doc. We've met with the town staff, the engineer, the highway department, and our engineering staff has done quite a bit of work as well. And I believe that all of those comments have been addressed to satisfaction. But we are here this evening with the engineers to answer them or any that I'm capable of answering myself, if you have some for me first.
All right, I guess most of these are just engineering details and stuff. There were concerns by some of the neighbors. We've got letters, and again, we did receive several comments from neighbors, and they've all been entered into the record for this project. There are several of them. Probably, I would think maybe a good thing to do would be to have the engineer go through and address all the PRC comments. Just run through that list. Those are the biggest concerns we had when it was in before. I'd say have them do that first. Or you want to do it, whoever's gonna do it.
Uh, yeah, off the, uh, Mr. Chairman, right off the record, you want me to read the comments or just discuss them? What do you prefer? Because the written comments I read here, I can read the-
See, there's the comments, and then there's responses to it. Let me, I don't know what to do with this right now. I don't want to answer it now.
And then finish his presentation.
If you are calling in, if someone is calling in right now, I suggest give the applicant an opportunity to make his presentation to the board, and then when he's complete, we'll open the phone line up. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to respond to those or Martin or Fred is here to answer them, you tell us how you'd like that to be. I would like to add one thing I did submit to Josh. I went Friday so I could see myself, our neighbors to the east, Mr. Wintercorn and his neighbor. I submitted a number of photographs. The creek, as it exists right now, has about three, four inches of water in it. And the neighbors to the north did have some ponding water, which I showed, but they're about three feet above the creek. So, that little standing water is not related at all to the creek. It's some negative drainage. And the same thing with our neighbors to the west side. He has some negative drainage as well. And as a developer, I would never get involved in getting onto private property, but I certainly would make available three to four loads of fill would regrade their property positively, and they would have no water on a standing nature from a rainfall issue. So, I'd be happy to do that. As developers, I'm always extremely conscious of drainage. That's a big issue. And I can say in the 24 or five subdivisions I've developed, even very sensitive ones with drainage issues, it has always, per the engineer's design, come out better, and I'm confident that it will here too. So, with that, I'll answer whatever other questions anyone may have.
Okay, so, well, again, I'd suggest we probably do is, if you want to run through these responses and comments, you've answered them. Just for the record.
Yep, I will. So, this is from the responses to the April 27 meeting. And some of them are sort of a little bit perfunctory in nature, so I won't get into those. One that might be of concern to our neighbor to the east. Can the driveway be moved? No, the driveway can't be moved due to the space limitations. But I did not speak personally with Mr. Wintercorn. I made a number of attempts to contact him. He works for a costage engineering. But I did place three markers in his yard and agreed to put three large eight to 10-foot pine trees there. He has only three small windows in the front of the property. I wasn't able to reach him. He didn't respond back, but we're still willing to do that, and that would give a very nice buffer between it. So, that was our response to that. I will be willing to plant another green buffer. Number two, the road name. We've submitted nine names to 911. They're on limited staff as well, so they haven't been able to give us a comment, but we're hoping one of them is approved. Number three, change the signature line. That's been done. Number four, the existing sanitary sewer, 16. They wanted a new note, so our people have done that. Number five, an outlet structure. There were some comments on the maximum flow rates through that. That has been addressed as well. Number six was regarding some existing site conditions for the private drive flows to the east. They've made accommodations for that. Number seven, the tributary staff asked that a 30-foot easement be drafted, which it has been. And also to clear the existing old creek for shrubs, which we have noted on our plans. Number eight, the slope of the driveway. They've addressed that from Station 00. Number nine, spacing of the temporary check dams. That's a standard thing. We missed that on the notes, but that has been added. Number 10, pavement section shows a proposed drainage swale. The swale has been added to the cross-section. Number 11, posts will be installed to clearly identify the HOA lands and in all of our other developments, once they're in, we just haven't had any issues with the neighbors acknowledging them. So, those will be installed. Number 12, a leak pipe has been added beneath the gutter on top of the standard drainage, so that has been addressed and will be installed. Number 13, a three-inch hole with a different invert on that 42-inch old pipe is shown, so they just changed the invert numbers, and we thank the engineering department for catching that for us. 14 is a little bit lengthy. Basically, is we did a client walk with the highway department, engineering department, myself, and we looked at all the neighboring adjoining properties, what their issues were, and how we could mitigate those. And the decision was if we define our northerly swale very slightly, all of the rest of the neighbors would be able then very quickly to drain to us. There's accumulation of leaves and debris over the few decades that are in the way, but it would allow the neighbors away with very minimal grading, some of them even handwork, to drain their properties onto us, which we have agreed to do. Number 16 deals with the lot area. We provided the engineering to that to their satisfaction and acknowledged it. Number 17 talks about the storm pipes. The costage study that we did not do, it was done for the town. I'm not sure 15 years ago, whatever it was, that deals with the culvert that you guys have. Now, it is our obligation as a developer to ensure that the runoff from our property is either no greater than or less than it is now. That is our responsibility. Engineering has shown through calculations that we are shortening the runoff of our property by almost 50%. But on top of that, there were some questions that some of the board members had regarding the culvert and the sizing. Some information has been provided to the engineering department and to the board to satisfy those answers. And I believe that was the last one, except for the March 9 letter on the clustering, the provisions, and what we provided in way of trees and buffering.
Okay, again, we did receive some letters. There are numerous of them. There are numerous of them. Some of the comments are, I don't even know if we're going through some of them. One of them, "The proposed project does not satisfy the requirement to prove the number of lots in the proposal and was determined by a conventional town approval plan." "It is also to reduce future costs to the town and its taxpayers to maintain, rebuild, and substandard..." Well, this is not, for the record, this is not a dedicated road. The developer's putting this road in. It's a private drive. There is no expense to the town for sewers, for any of the structure of the subdivision. The roads will be maintained as private homeowners. They're not to be built under substandard. There are requirements for the condition the roads have to be built in within load bearing. Someone put in also, "The number of lots able to fit on the land should be determined after space needed." Well, these comments, the board and the town is well aware of some of these comments, and these have been followed. The number of houses are what would be allowed on subdivision.
Tony?
Yes.
Tony, this is Derek.
Yeah.
I agree with that first comment, and I believe the area was calculated properly.
Oh, okay, you're all right with that?
No, the number that they had is wrong.
Okay, with-
The calculation submitted by BME do not conform to the town code.
And the drainage?
And for the number of lots, it can be on this parcel.
Okay, how are you, how are you-
The town's, the town- Well, two people sent in copies of the code, and I'm looking at the code right now.
Okay, what does it say?
And it has very specific things. It has very specific guidance on the size of a lot and then the areas that have to be subtracted from the parcel.
But is that, is that a-
The number parcels that can be allowed.
But is that a private drive also? This is not a dedicated road.
No, no, this is the requirements for cluster development. Numbering drawing permitted. I'm looking at Section 192-27. Cluster developments are called D. Number of drawings and no units permitted. Number one, it talks about the areas that you have to look into it, and the land that has to be subtracted when you go through and do the calculations for number of acres.
You want to check that?
I'm looking at B. I'm also looking at the BME associate's calculations, and I don't, I don't agree with them. They have, here's the property size of being 4.76 acres, and for the areas that are supposed to be subtracted per town code, they have zero. That is incorrect.
Okay.
The conventional calculations with the way the town code typically is written.
Okay, cluster development.
You have the ability-
Go ahead.
You have the ability to put only between five to eight parcel, or houses, on this parcel.
All right, we're gonna have to do something.
Because right now, right now, this parcel, this water, this parcel has on it a water main, an eight-inch water main that is dedicated to the Monroe County Water Authority. It's got a couple hydrants on it. So, that is, that area, it's a public structure. The way of way for that, for that water main has to be subtracted from the parcel with the multiple areas. That is under D1A. D1B says water bodies. There is a stream going through this parcel. The thing, to the calculations, they are showing that when that thing charges, that it takes out a pretty good section of area. You know, enough that the parcel number two is, it's really not a parcel. You know, that parcel only has about 7,000 square feet of usable space on it. They did not, in their calculations, subtract water bodies. So, their calculations are wrong. There's also discussions in here about whether it's up to 20, but up to 25% are told to say the parcel has slopes greater than 15%. You know, the key is it says upwards, and there are areas on this land that have slopes greater than 15%, so they did not take that into consideration. So, the key points on it, the 192-27, D1A, B and C are all being correct on their calculations. They put zero. Those are numbers that need to be subtracted. If you do a, when you do a proper takeoff, it's only about 5.5 houses that could be put on this parcel.
Well, you may have something there that, okay. The only one, I would question, though, I'm wondering, and it's only a piece of it, is what I'm thinking is, you know, for cluster development, yes, you have to take out for the road, but if it's a private road-
It's a private drive, it's-
A private drive, you have to take out for that too?
No.
No?
Well, it said, where you're in public structures and race of way, you have a public water main on here. It's dedicated to the Monroe County Water Authority. That way of way-
But sewer lines and water line typically in private property, anyway?
The water main is a public structure. I'm not talking about the driveway and the road. I'm talking about the easement you got for that water main, so the water authority can go into it. That is not developed with land, so it has to get subtracted from it.
All right, then, hm, in this case, can't go any further forward with the-
And then the B-
One person.
B says water bodies. It also discusses areas that are steama, and it also discusses federal and state wetlands.
Yeah.
I don't see anything on here that talks about wetlands in it. But it's a water body, so you have a stream that goes through here, and we know the water elevation that this goes up to, and we have the topography on this. That area itself, you know, when you run the numbers, is almost 19,000 square feet. It needs to be subtracted. The utility easement works out to be almost 68,000 square feet. That may be overstated because, again, that is the wetland.
We don't say anything to these.
The reason is just the water mains go up the ash of it. You know, so that could be down around 30,000 square feet, but it runs the whole length of the public structure. That's not included in the area. BMEs, in their calculations, they say zero for all these. They don't even acknowledge water bodies with the way the code is written. They left that off the calculation completely.
But there's no 100-year floodplains in that property.
The number of houses on this thing, it's more than what's allowed by the code.
192-27 says water bodies, all areas within the 100-year flood boundary is indicated on the flood insurance maps.
Hold on just a second, Derek. Jeff's just looking something up here.
It says water bodies comma and areas within the 100-year floodplain pursuant to the steama maps and state and federal wetlands, so we subtract it from the total growth area. Water bodies is not in reference to the floodplain. Water bodies is-
That's not my interpretation of that rule.
He's right.
Well, I'm not gonna be the one to determine the drainage and stuff in this.
Well, but that's not typical. All right, go ahead. What did you say?
Raj, go ahead.
Do you have a response to his, the concerns raised by Mr. Anderson? You or your engineer, perhaps?
No, may I speak, not being a professional engineer, I would say, since we're on record, that this is our third meeting. We've had three meetings with the town staff. We've, I've had a personal meeting with the supervisor and Mr. Anderson. We have had multiple late meetings with the highway department, and we have submitted to the engineering department every single thing they've asked for. We've got an approval on the density. I'm interested as to why this would come up now when we have followed every step of the town's procedure. And this evening, and these comments-
I have asked this question since day one. It has not been answered.
Derek, start over, start over again.
It has not been answered until now.
Derek, start over again.
The reason why-
We are, did you, go ahead, start over.
The reason why is I have been asking this question since day one, and I see the calculations from BME came back as March 9. I did not get these calculations until this week, okay? So, it's the first time I've seen them, the first time I've seen that the calculations were titled off. I'm a board member. It's not necessarily my place to be doing the engineering review that the engineering department is doing. The engineering department's the one that should have gone through these calculations, gone through the code line by line and said, you know, these calculations are not right. So, here we are. Several months later, now the final answer comes up. I've given calculations that are wrong and looking at the parcel. This parcel, by the way the code is written, cannot have nine lots on it. It has anywhere from five lots to seven lots, maybe eight lots, depending on how wide you say the width is for the water main easement.
Well, we're at a pickle here with this. Yeah?
Let me ask a very dangerous question to Mr. Anderson, since Mr. Anderson seems to be, I would say, running the decision of all of the staff and all of the town departments that we pay a lot of money to listen to. Mr. Anderson, would you be happy if this development went down to eight lots? Would that satisfy your calculations?
I believe that the things that should be submitted with the proper calculations and the engineering department make the determination that they have reviewed the calculation on a line-by-line basis according to the code and put their concurrence on it. I'm one voice.
When the engineering department meets with our professional engineers that are highly paid, and they concur, and they look at the density, and they review the density, and they review the surrounding square footages, and they together, as a professional team, decide that it meets their code, you then have the unilateral authority to overrule the entire department.
No, I don't think he's doing that.
No, what I'm saying is I look at it, and I say that the code was not followed and that it should be re-reviewed and done according to the code.
Okay, look, let's do this. Go ahead. I, I, I'm, I kind of concur with what you're saying, I guess, since you are the engineer, you are an engineer. You're not, you are a board member, but you also are an engineer. You have done your homework on it. So, my suggestion is, we're gonna have to table this then, and we're gonna have to just get together and review it and see what it comes out to be. I don't think we can make a decision here tonight. Well, I, I was wondering if-
For the other Derek, I agree.
Go ahead, hop in.
For the other Derek, I agree to table this.
Yeah.
So, the proper calculation can be done.
Yeah, I think that's what we're gonna have to do, so that everybody's in agreement with what we're coming up with. It is a touchy area. There are a lot of concerns. I don't want to move forward and, you know, have a discrepancy, and then we end up in court, you know, being held up with it there. So, I think what best bet for us to do right now would be to table this thing and to a future date and-
Oh, I did. Excuse me, sorry, Derek, and I'd like to point out too, as much as myself, this document review, we got the exact same comment from two residents, but they want you to code. They submitted copies of the code. They questioned whether or not the code was being followed. So, we are responding to their comments, and by looking at the code, responding to their comments, yes, they were correct. It does not appear that they were done right.
All right, let's do this then. Derek, Max, you want to make a motion to table?
Uh, sure. I'd like to make a motion to table this to a meeting date. I don't know how long it's gonna take to review all of this. That's, I guess, the question.
Well, just put it to be-
I would like to table this to an appropriate meeting for the government.
Even if you were to turn it to a different date at that point, I do date. All right.
Just, we'll have to come up with a date. What's the date?
Today's the 5th. The next meeting.
Make it, all right, stick that one and go to the next one. Probably go to the next one.
June 2nd?
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, June 2nd?
Yes. Motion to table this discussion to June 2nd.
Okay.
Oh, I will second. It's favorina.
Okay, good. Okay, Dave, you're okay? Dave, Dave Anderson, let me, Derek? Uh, John Cozel?
Yeah.
You're in favor of it?
I say aye.
Okay, Mark Jardina? Mark, and myself, aye, okay. And Derek Anderson, we got that. So, okay, then we're tabling it to June 2nd. We'll table to that date.
Do you want clarification on what Derek's looking for?
Derek, I'd suggest maybe if you can just make a, make a copy of those particular issues that you did have.
Was it the ones he sent me this week?
I'm getting a lot of, somebody's not, somebody's not muting the phone because I'm getting all kinds of static in there. Derek, could you submit to the town your comments, and then Jeff can deal with the engineers on that? Would that work for you? Okay?
Yeah, to Derek.
Okay, great, great. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, good, then we'll do that. So, we're tabled to June 2nd, the meeting, okay? All right, yeah, sure, Rudy, go ahead.
As everybody knows, this is not an environment for excessively spending money that doesn't need to be spent. So, might I ask, is there anything else that Mr. Anderson is not in agreement with that the engineering department is, so we can be prepared? Is there any other issues that he doesn't like that we have got approval on from the engineering department?
Well, Rudy, number one, I mean, you've been to three meetings. I understand that. But, you know, there's projects smaller and less complicated than this that have been in for more meetings too. So, you're not unique in this. My suggestion is if he's gonna present his concerns, I think those are the main concerns, because all the other, and that's his line of work too. And, you know, we've reviewed all the engineering details, all the other stuff, you know, and we're all okay with that. So, I think if this is resolved, do you need to take a lot out? Yeah, I don't know, maybe, you know, it's, you know, one thing I was looking at while we're still on this, on the original concept drawing, where you're showing, where you're showing the conventional design, you have eight plus one, you got nine lots on there, but you're not showing any detention area in that plan either. Was there?
Yes.
Is there is on there? Okay, I didn't see that, okay. So, it's in the back, still in the back of those places. But it was spread over all those lots, which wasn't going to be acceptable anyways, because it would have had to been on one lot, remember? In other words, no, that's okay, you know, with the cluster, that's all right. No, but I mean for the conventional drawing, something you might want to think of. I mean, I don't want this coming up again. On the conventional drawing, okay, there you got it, all right. Right there, Rudy, you've got a wet tank. Right there, Rudy, you've got a rectangle. How many lots in there? Go ahead.
That's just showing the different conformity segments, that's not the...
That's, the rectangle is the lots.
That's showing all the surrounding...
Okay, but in there, you're showing the lots with a driveway going into them, but there's no detention pond separate, in other words, you're combining a bunch of lots, which would not be acceptable, remember I mentioned that at the earlier meeting?
That's not the density map, that's just showing all the surroundings areas of the lot that BME provided for the engineering department, they asked for a view of what are the sizes of the average lots around, that's what that map was showing.
The other drawing was submitted.
See, I've got a drawing here showing two, four, six, eight, nine lots
Right.
Coming off of, coming off of hard road, but there's no detention in there. Here, here's what I got.
Yeah, I know what it looks like.
You know the one I'm talking about?
Yeah.
This is the one I'm talking about, but, so to determine for the cluster, could you build nine, could you put nine lots, I guess that's the question, I want to get that clarified now.
Engineering department said yes. Protection ponds are required just in almost every project nowadays.
No, no, I know, but where is it?
It's on their map, it's not...
It's not here.
It's not on that sheet, correct.
This is the conventional drawing.
Okay.
See, it's not showing it, so what I'm saying, I don't want them to come back in, and then we can hit with that again, you know? So clarify it now, because
Okay.
You might only be able to get eight lots out of this. You see what I'm saying? Here, let me come that up, I'll give it to you here.
Really?
So there's two, four, six, eight, nine lots, and then the road coming in, but there's no detention there, so you'd have to have, and the lots, we're doing it on this because it was going to be under the homeowners, and we were okay with it, but you need to show this to be able to do that, you see what I'm saying? Okay, so you, again, you may lose a lot there to create the pond area, I don't know, I mean, that's, I just want to get it now, so I was looking at this tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, I guess that's it, then we'll table this until June second, we're all set, okay?
So I'm clear then?
I have another question, please.
Go ahead, go ahead, Derek.
Um, the way the note is on here about the easement, I'm trying to think of it, it says access and utility easement to Town of West from Monocity Water Authority, lots two and nine, and then Subdevelopment Incorporated. This thing scales off in a seventy-eight foot easement? Is that the size that it actually needs to be?
Seventy-eight foot easement?
Yeah, that's just what it scales to on the draw, because there's actually no dimension given for the easement, it just called it out. But did that plays into the calculation of areas that you have to take out?
I would, I would put that down as a question you have.
Put his questions on a list.
We'll submit that with the rest of questions, and let them address it.
With the engineers.
That'll be the best way to do this.
The water main itself, because it does... The water main, because it does have a the easement to the Monocity Water Authority, it is being dedicated to the water authority, correct?
Is that dedicated to the Monocity Water?
The water main, yes, but the easement is part of the lot.
The easement is part of the lot.
It's not public right of...
All right, you know what, again, I'm just gonna repeat, just put that down as one of your comments, which is totally legit, and then, then I'll be together, let them address it. And then, and then sending out copies of their response adequate time before the meeting, this way we've got it, too, this way he can look at it ahead of time. Okay, you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, great, well, thanks a lot.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, am I clear from a layman's standpoint, that if the engineering department, and my engineers, and you as the chairman, and whoever else wants to look at this, makes a determination, whatever that determination is, and they make an official determination in writing, and Mr. Anderson disagrees with some technical point, which rule would...
Well, see, what it is, it's not we're disagreeing, I mean, he's not disagreeing with a technical point, he's disagreeing with the way it's written up, I think he may have a legitimate concern.
I understand that, but if...
So if, if he didn't catch it, who was gonna catch it?
I'm happy that, for his comments, and some of the other ones were good. My question is, if the entire engineering and town departments issue a letter that says, "We are satisfied and the determination is X,"
Mm-hmm.
Does then a board member have the right to...
Then the board, then the board member has a right to refute it and say, "I disagree with this, that, or the other, there are certain members of the board." If Derek was still opposed to it, and everybody was in agreement with the rest, it's six to one vote, it would be approved. It's not just me, it's not just him, you know, it's the board, you know, that's...
But, but in fairness to Mr. Anderson, I do think he said it correctly previously, that the apple can't have to get the calculations correct.
Yeah, yeah.
And resubmit it to the...
Of course.
The public works, and if they agree, they can present whatever they want to the board, and like you say, it's, every board member has to make his own decision
Yeah.
Whether they agree or disagree with the calculations, and why.
Yeah.
I mean, I would say why.
I think, I think, I think if Derek's concerns are addressed, I think we'd be on course, we'd be all right with it.
I'm not an engineer, but it just seems to me, that this is just a math question, so we should be pretty close between all of the engineers.
Correct.
Am I somewhat correct in the saying that?
Yes.
Okay.
I think if he follows the code, it should be obvious what the...
Well, see, yeah, if, yeah, if it's them, but again, if he submits his concerns, then you could look at that, actually, he's helping you by doing that. You know, he's giving you the information that he sees lacking. Now, could turn around that half of it is, you're correcting, and half of it he's correcting, but whatever it is, at least we'll get to the bottom of it and get it resolved, so we'll go with that, that's the best we can do.
Okay, all right, we'll make sure we address that issue in our next application.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Rudy. All right, one more.